We have called a replay.
Okay. Top class.
All right. As I clocked, it's all in order to start with pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Move to further agenda of the July twenty first, two thousand twenty regular meeting as presented.
Seven.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Of seven.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted more than five minutes per policy B D D H one, public participation at board meetings. The following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I see no public participation. Next, we have reports of the superintendent.
Yes, um, thank you, and I hope you're all doing well. We've set my presentation up behind you, so you may have to turn a little bit. In your board packet, there are a couple of notes of appreciation. One is from an employee, and the other is from Saint Vincent de Paul. It's a two thousand nineteen year of appreciation. Um, and they sent a plaque with that, so we have placed that in district office just so you know. The next item on our report is that we will hold the two thousand twenty school tax rate hearing on Tuesday, August twenty fifth, um, at seven P M. prior to the regular, uh, regular board meeting. Um, and we'll determine as we get closer to that whether it will be in this location, if we'll be back in the projection room, or if it will be live streamed. It's just going to depend on the guidance from county health and C D C. So we'll make that announcement once we know what we can do. Okay? The other thing that I'm going to add to my report is reopening school. I know there's a lot of, uh, a lot of questions around that plan. And, you know, here we are on July twenty first, and school is still a month away because our first day, day back wouldn't begin until August twenty fourth. So we have had meetings with county health, uh, the hospital. We have guidance from local pediatricians. Um, they're, we're actually meeting with them again this week. Um, yesterday, we had a large committee come in, and in the reforming arts center, we spent the entire day trying to determine what methods of instruction to offer our parents and our students. Um, so we ended up having to split into an elementary and a middle school, high school, um, groupings. And so they spent time and made some decisions. Um, they're not final solid plans, but we're going to work on, uh, solidifying those pretty soon and getting parents some information so they know what options are available to them. Uh, as far as the large plan with, uh, details of what sanitation products and options and things we will have available to the students and what the requirements are on our, I'm sorry, to staff, and then what the requirements are as far as like mask and face shields. Um, that big plan, we plan to publish by August seventh. August seventh would be the latest date. It will come out sometime during that first weekend, August. It changes daily. We did get, uh, a folder, a Google folder from, uh, M S, Massa, and in it, they're asking all school districts in the state that are Massa members to put their reopening plan. So that's been a great resource, um, I think, or it will be, since we can have time to really dig into some of those. Um, Bailey Isle, communications director, has done an excellent job of compiling what we could get our hands on to this point and kind of rough draft and sketching and what we think and how we want our plan to look. There's still a lot of meetings that are going to have to happen before that plan is ready to go out, and that's what we're working on. I want people to know we're not just sitting around waiting. This is, this is a monument, monumental task. Um, no one's ever done this, so it, it's pretty stressful at times. But we're going to make choices that are best for our students and our families and to make sure our staff members are safe. For the public, you see the face shields that we're all sporting tonight. Um, our staff members will all have the option of having the face shield. Um, we're also providing them with two masks, and we did put some guidance out last week asking parents to obtain one, two masks if they can for their child. We're also going to be in the next few days, uh, putting an announcement out because we know there are people in the community who have volunteered to give us child size and adult size masks because they're making them anyway for like the hospital and other organizations. We are going to put something out and start accepting those. Um, we've talked to county health about that because if we have a student come in that needs a mask, we should, we need to be able to give them something. So if we have to give them back, we're going to ask the students to bring them back. Uh, we'll have a location where they drop them, and we'll launder them according to what we were told to do and redistribute as needed, so. I'm trying to think, am I missing anything?
Just thank everybody for taking surveys.
Oh, yes. And I want to, we want to thank everyone, staff members, uh, parents for taking the time to take that survey. We know it was long, um, but there's some really valuable information in there that's helping guide the process that we're working on right now. Um, and then the last thing I'll add, I know we had to cancel banking. People need to realize that the guidance, I know we all know socially distanced, six feet apart is the recommendation. But when you're talking about an instrument that you're forcing air through, um, that guidance drastically changes. Some of those instruments, the guidance moves up to nine feet apart. Um, so Mr. Winnie, and I think some of the students just did not feel comfortable holding banking camp with those more stringent guidelines, um, and really having to spread out that much. So, you know, just realize that the guidance can't be the same for every activity. Six feet is the minimum that we're going to try to stick to, because there are some things that the guidance is much larger, especially when you're talking about banking choir. So do you all have any questions for me?
Dr. Flea, I had some parents ask about getting ready for school. I just hope to go about it the normal way, except possibly add to that help your child understand about wearing a mask as best they can and how to wash their hands, things like that. Any other advice?
I think that's really good advice, um, because like I said, we, we've worked through the different methods and options that will be available to parents. It's really going to be, how they prepare their child is really going to be dependent on what they choose. If they know they want them to be at school, whether it's traditional or a blend, like a blended model where they're home a few days and they're here, um, they're going to need their school supplies, and they're going to need those things. So if they think and were able to do an on-campus option, then yes, they need to move forward with buying supplies and preparing for school like they normally would.
They would need those supplies even at home, don't they, really?
Probably most of them, yes.
Maybe not as much, but.
Probably most of them, yes. Of course, we'll, we provide the Chromebook.
Right.
Well, the thought, the funding thing in Confederate State is now that they're letting me go back to school potentially. Is there any, are they going to fund us again fully, or let's, have you heard anything, or?
I haven't heard anything else. Um, our July payment was very small, um, because they, they took all of the withholds that the governor announced from the budget, and they withheld everything from our July payments. Um, does that mean that's the only withhold or restriction that's going to happen? No, I think there will be more withholds and restrictions as we get down the road, potentially every month. It just depends on the state of the economy right now, and in the future is depending on where this virus goes.
You know, with all the extra supplies and cleaning and sanitation, things like this, we're still going.
Yes, we are. Um, but we are trying to access FEMA grant money to help cover some of that. And then the county does have a grant also, and so we're also submitting items to the county to see if we can get funding somewhere. Um, we are not crossing over and double dipping. We are taking those items and saying, this goes to county and this goes to FEMA. We want to make sure that that's clear, and we're not trying to double dip. We're just trying to get some of these expenses covered in as many ways as possible. I think it was last month, I shared the, the grant, the five thousand dollar grant that we got to help with, um, that we obtained, that actually Bailey and Gina Lidle, our director of nursing, um, obtaining to help cover some nursing supplies. And then, like I said last month, we're just looking for anything and everything that we can do to help cover some of this, because there, it's a lot.
So expenses are up or revenue is down?
Pretty much.
Beyond, I mean, I know as a board, we appreciate the COVID money from the county, from FEMA. Have you gotten any sort of guidance as far as school federally or from state?
You mean reopening? Well, I think we've all heard the federal government's side. Even our, uh, Betsy DeVos, who runs the Department of Education for the federal, is saying open schools or you could potentially lose your federal money. Um, and I believe I heard from someone that the governor is saying open schools too, so. But, you know, I understand that there are people out there that want schools to open, but I also understand there are people and families out there that have children and or loved ones in the home that have medical conditions that put them at higher risk, so they need options. They need to figure out and identify the best way and the best option for their entire family to keep that loved one or that, that child safe.
So I guess more specifically, has, has, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or Department of Education given any assistance as far as guidance, as far as reopening, what to do, what not to do?
Um, they, they've directed this to the C D C, Brooklyn, and, uh, D H S S, but the commissioner of education in the state of Missouri, along with the governor, have said that it is a local control decision, and they will not tell districts what to do in local communities, what cities to do. And I know in other states, like, you know, across the border in Illinois, uh, their governor is telling them, he's going to reopen the schools. That was what he said several weeks ago, and I don't know if that's changed. But no, everything is local control, you make the decision.
And we're moving forward at this point with sports also?
Yes. Mischa has, yes, Mischa has put out, uh, guidelines that basically say the same thing that they said in the spring. If you're having face-to-face classes, then you can do face-to-face sporting, or you can do sporting events. If you're not having face-to-face classes, then you can't participate in sporting events.
Dr. Flea, does that mean, um, or could that mean not only, uh, in, in, uh, class, but like virtual or, uh, or like all things going at home? Or that means you have to be in school?
Well, I'm going to look to Bailey. I think from the way I read it, you have to have your doors open and some students in school.
Yes, I don't know that they said you have to have all students in all five days a week. They're just saying, that's in terms of construction, you can have individual activities, but you have no in-person construction, um, and then in between.
Well, that, that, this is sometimes, uh, when I, that requires me, well, we've got to have some things, uh, in school and some day off, because that's what they're doing in other schools we're doing. And then the other question was, are we going to be, have enough people to make sure we're being sanitized in the classroom?
We're working on that, I hope.
But, you know, it was, that was the biggest concern, are we going to? Well, I'm going to tell you, the ones that I talked to said not that they didn't want their kids home, but they didn't have a teacher. And they weren't, you know, and they weren't work, they weren't sure that they were doing well. So I think that was the thing, is, you know.
Yeah, that's, it's going to depend on the spread and the virus in our community.
I told them that we were going to make sure everything, we were going to, we could make sure that the students were safe and so was the faculty. It definitely happened.
So going back to the ban, as people are going to say, uh, will there be any ban this year?
Uh, I don't know that we have answers to that either.
Because, um, please, uh, I'm, um, past all of the face-to-face, so I guess, I don't know why.
Yeah, and you know, I've got, I've received a lot of questions about prom. Um, how, why couldn't we open prom? You know, if you look at our junior and senior class, that's about two hundred and fifty kids.
So you might just pop that in.
And that decision, you know, a lot of people are like, why did you, me and me, cancel that? And I'm like, I was not even a part of that discussion. That is a high school activity, and the students involved in that discussion, who were juniors and seniors, who made that choice. It wasn't me telling anybody what to do. Um, same thing to graduation, the kids and Mr. Hammy and Dr. Boyd, they were a part of that. It wasn't me telling them when graduation or clean. Our students have been involved in a lot of these decisions, you know, most of the decisions, I'm going to say. So they're a part of the process. And, you know, with prom, they really spoke up and said, you know, we have to be responsible to our community. And to have a prom with, you know, with all two hundred and fifty attend, you know, um, but, you know, to have a large gathering like that, is that really being responsible?
Dr. Flea, I was really impressed with some of those kids because I was around a few of them, and a couple of older people made comments. Why can't we, say, can we have this? And like I tell you, they could do all of it in their voice. They were really, they were bound inside that.
Yes. You know, the leader in reprograms that we run at the elementary, so it sure goes up to the middle school. It, that's what it's all about, yeah. They, this is their school, we're here to help them and to guide them. They need to be a part of the decision process. Because once they walk out of these walls with that diploma, all decisions are on them. You know, they're adults, and they're.
And you value that.
Yes.
Dr. Flea, I heard a few teachers talking, I didn't know, I'm sure we have plans to arm parents with this information, but if we go blended or, um, if a parent has the option and selects alternative method of instruction and does instruction at home, some teachers have discussed that that's going to be more rigorous this fall than it was in the spring. It's not going to look like what it looked like in the spring, is that accurate?
That is very accurate. It, it will be taught just like we teach it in the classroom, pretty much. The rigor, um, deadlines, pacing guides, grades, um, you're going to be very accountable, and you're going to have to earn a grade.
Is there a certain case of someone decides to do the virtual learning that they tend to, you know?
We're working on that. We have not really set any of those deadlines aren't fast yet. I think we discussed it yesterday, I have an idea, but we're not ready to say this is what we can do, and this is the next two five.
So if they make a choice, when school's starting, and the virus went up, say, and they want to start a community school or vice versa, and that the outbreak is worse, can they, can they change at some point? Or, I mean, I know you don't want to cure a week and at home a week, and, you know, but it's some, they have the discretion to alter that?
I, I will share what other districts are doing. Other districts are putting out an application, and parents have to commit to whatever method they're going to use, and it's for the entire first semester. I understand because I don't know how it flows. If we want to do a variety of models, methods, and we want our, our staff to do the instruction. There are kids, we want our people working with them. We don't want to set them up on an online platform and just turn loose and not have any connection or, um, direct contact with them. We believe a piece of that accountability that will be, that will make it more successful and the accountability to be higher is that connection with our staff. So we, we want to try to figure out how our staff can do the different methods. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Do you two have anything to add to that?
I think it, it becomes a staffing issue as well, because if we decide on blended or we decide on traditional, and we set up our staffing according to that, and then we get some students a quarter when it could change, and there's, you know, twenty five to thirty, where do we place them with our staff? And that's where it comes, it's not that we don't want to let them come into school if it lets up or transition to home. It's that for our staffing and the assignments that we have to make to prepare for whatever method we're going to do, that's where it becomes difficult.
Dr. Flea, are, uh, other schools having a policy on? And you, if we offer, uh, blend, well, not blended, but if we offer, uh, virtual or, uh, online, and, uh, parents select that, can their children participate in extracurriculars?
Um, do anyone want to help me out with the Mischa guidance?
Do you remember, right, so, um, by school districts, again, that's what I assume is that by school district, if the school district has students in, you know, taking a portion, at least a portion of in-person classes, then yes. Um, but as far as, I have, I have not personally seen that yet, but we're still waiting for that, I, I haven't, I haven't asked. That's, I'm not, it will seem in taking the work of the, you know.
They gave no, Mischa gave no figures for sending to mid-school or student virtual. You said, I guess, wait, we, if you have one, one student in school, the rest are virtual, you can have all your corporate activities. If I read it correctly.
It just doesn't make sense to me if you're going to keep your child home, but you want them to play sports. Doesn't one counteract the other? That's my only thought, right?
Yeah, because it won't be corporate.
Yes, and, you know, participation in Mischa sanctioned activities is a privilege. It's not a right. Nobody can, a right or is entitled to be on a sports team, whereas everyone that comes to school here has a right to a pretty appropriate education. They're two separate different thing, they're two separate things, and I think people sometimes think just because my kid goes to your school, they should be able to play basketball or whatever on your basketball team. That's not true. There's higher standards, there's more accountability, um, requirements that your child has to meet. If he or she can't, then they can't be a part of that privilege.
And I, I assume yes, but will we still offer lunch and meals to every student, no matter what offer we give them?
Um, I'm going to assume yes, but there's a webinar on that tomorrow. So I, I guess the appropriate answer would be, I don't know at this time.
Well, I'm sure you'd be working hard, so.
Yes, so I would want you to know by, um, by the first weekend, August.
Yes, first weekend, August. And that's version one. The second weekend, August, we may have version two. It wasn't.
I don't have a lot on the twenty fourth, but.
Uncharted, though.
Yes. First day of school, August twenty fourth.
If we start, and the numbers go up, we have to revert back.
Yeah. Thank you guys for all the, all the hard work. Yes, um, and yesterday, like I said, we had this large meeting, large, over thirty, thirty.
Yeah, we're thirty, about thirty individuals, socially distanced.
Socially distanced, wearing masks, proficiates. Um, so, you know, administrators, uh, we have teachers, support staff, um, union reps. It was a great, it was a great discussion. It was really great to like get it started and try to step back and let it flow, so. It, it was a really good discussion, and I really appreciate the time, um, and all the effort that people were putting in to, you know, providing us with information and feedback. It's really been a stressful process, but also a really great process to see all the different ideas evolved.
Thank you very much. Like I said, that every meeting at a different level for four months in a row, but thank you.
Okay, that's the end of my report.
And unfinished business?
Um, I don't have any, um, introductions, I just have a little one-minute slide for it. It's a good July picture.
Looks very good. Next, we have new business, uh, food service prices.
Okay. And I thought you might enjoy this, I think Hallmark and several other channels are doing Christmas in July, so.
Oh, yeah.
Christmas in July.
I've seen some of those meetings, I've, I thought that was a good channel.
I don't think Dr. Taylor would like that. All right, school lunch prices. Um, we have Mrs. Lori Roth, who's our core data, um, food service assistant. And Lori has done the calculation to the federal pricing requirements, and we are required to increase our full pay student breakfast and lunch prices by ten cents for this upcoming school year. Um, reduced breakfast and lunch prices will not increase. So down at the bottom is the table, and so reduced, uh, breakfast and lunch, well, reduced breakfast will stay at thirty cents a day. Uh, reduced lunch will stay at forty cents a day. Full pay breakfast at the elementary and the middle school, high school increases to a dollar forty per day. And lunch for elementary and middle school, high school increases at the elementary to two eighty, I'm sorry, at the elementary to two eighty, and at the middle school and high school to two ninety a day. Um, and then if you look at the adult prices on the bottom, those are also increasing ten cents from last year.
I think it's still on full pay, it's a dollar forty, it's a dollar.
Yeah, yes, full pay, I'm sorry, elementary and middle school, high school breakfast is a dollar fifty. Sorry, I was trying to nab me around, somebody's in. So that is the increases that we are going to have to make. Do you have any questions on those increases?
We had to go up last year, at least, like.
We had to go up last year also. I think it was the year before we did not.
Oh, okay. It was how, like ten cents last year, five cents?
Ten cents last year. It, it seemed like we, we. It, it seems like we, we can't ever reach the threshold because it owes increases itself.
I'll move to very food service prices for the 2020, 21 school year.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have revised language on support staff salaries.
Yes, um, last month you approved the salary schedule, but what we also did last month, um, from the 2020, uh, need to defer process with our support staff group. Um, for less than 12-month employees, uh, many years ago, they negotiated a benefit and they termed it vacation days. And again, this is only for less than 12-month employees. 12-month employees get vacation days and can use vacation days in a vacation day way. Um, less than 12-month employees have what we term vacation days, but they can only use them, um, on like inclement weather days or days like over Christmas break when they were going to have a smaller check to kind of supplement their pay and, and make sure that they have a more consistent pay. Um, there's always been a lot of confusion, especially with our new employees. You know, they think they have vacation days with them and they try to use them. They don't have vacation days. So we worked with, um, the support staff group and we are wanting to rename, we did rename in the, uh, policy, less than 12-month employee vacation days to a longevity benefit. And so we also added to that, we created a calendar to show exactly where, how many days you did are going to be, uh, applied. So we did change the policy in June. We just need to change the language on the salary schedule because we missed it. Terry and I missed it when we sent it to you. So I apologize for that.
I move to approve the revised language on the support staff salary schedule for the 20, 2021 school year. Salary schedule is attached with the, uh, mutation of the longevity dates.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have action for a closed meeting.